Good evening, we're now ready to begin. This planning mission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join me with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Vice Chair Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Buckley.
Present.
We have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed on your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 12th Planning Commission meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion when you approve the minutes of the February 12th Planning Commission meeting.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries. All right. Yes. To those watching, we have a new voting system, and so that was our first one, and it worked. Not a controversial item, but at least we made it work this time. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Item number six, the applicant is requesting this item be held in abeyance to the April 9th, 2009 Planning Commission, as they are experiencing difficulties in contracting the property owner so as to facilitate signation materials to the city. Item number nine and 10, the applicant has requested these items be held in abeyance to April 9th, 2009 Planning Commission meeting, as the applicant is addressing outstanding issues. Item number 21, staff is requesting this item be held to the March 26th, 2009 Planning Commission meeting so that it may be re-notify. Item number 22 and number 23, staff is requesting that these items be held to the March 26th, 2009 Planning Commission meeting so as to address outstanding issues. Item number 32, the applicant is requesting that this item be held to the April 9th, 2009 Planning Commission meeting, as the applicant's representative is out of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone here wish to speak on any of these items? Please approach the mic and...
I'd like to add one more. Shane Hennessy York, 7030 Smoke Ranch Road. We'd like to hold item number 14 for 30 days. We're going to co-locate, we're going to approach another tower and try to co-locate on a facility adjacent rather than come forward with a new tower at this time.
Thank you. Okay, that'll be an April 9th meeting. No one wishing to speak on any of these items? Mr. Truesdale, your motion on the housekeeping items, please?
Before we make the vote, I would just ask the applicant, if they're watching on items nine and 10, if they intend to go forward with this on the next meeting, please let everyone know. As recent as this morning, I don't think anybody had any notice that the intention of abeyance. I don't think there's anybody here, but I had heard that there might be some people from the neighborhood who wanted to speak on the item. And fortunately, they, I don't believe are here, so just a heads up and some advance notice would be helpful. I don't think it's a particularly controversial item, but I don't think it's fair either to wait until the day of the hearing to seek the abeyance if it's information that's available prior to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and we have a, someone else wants to speak, or?
Katie Fellowes, 37733 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant for items nine and 10, and wanted to say thank you for your concerns, and we will take them into account.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the abeyance withdrawal request items as read in by staff.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on item six, because I have some financial dealings with Golden Arch.
And Mr. Chairman, I will abstain on items nine and 10, as our law firm is representing the applicant.
Thank you. Please cast your votes. Motion carries, but we have several abstentions that need to be noted.
We will knock those, yes.
Okeydoke. Okay, we have no consent items, so we can move on to the one motion, one vote. The following items that may be considered, excuse me, the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be open at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number seven is EOT 33086. The applicant owner is Richard P. Brooks and Gracielle G. Niszek. The extension of time approval for variance to allow a six-foot rear yard setback where a 15-foot rear yard setback is required for proposed 1,435 square foot addition to an existing single-family residence on .28 acres at 705780 Speaking Rock Avenue. And number eight is site development review. The applicant is Nevada Energy. The property owner is the City of Las Vegas, and it's for the proposed relocation of a utility transmission line route in the main street right-of-way between Gracia Street and South, on the South, and Lewis Avenue on the North. Any discussion of these items, or staff presentation of these two items? None? Okay. Sir, would you like to speak on either of these items?
I'm Richard Brooks of 5780 Speaking Rock. No, I just don't know the process. I thought maybe you needed me to come up and...
You may just slide right on through if you're okay with the conditions.
I'll slide right back on.
Thank you, sir.
If there are no comments, Commissioner, Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve items seven and eight under the one motion, one vote.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Worked, Mr. Brooks.
And those are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Okay, we now move to item number 11, the public hearing items. It's WVR 32158. The applicant is Royal Construction. The owner is Spinnaker Homes 5 LLC to allow a four-foot sidewalk without an amenities zone along a 40-foot and a 50-foot portion of Deer Springs Way, where a five-foot sidewalk with a three-foot amenities zone is required adjacent to the Deer Springs Way approximately 400 feet east of Fort Apache Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance in order for the applicant to work with staff in order to see if there was a meaningful solution. The waiver is still required. Staff cannot support the waiver, as the project was not built the plan and is recommending denial. There have been additional support letters received since printing.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and ask anyone in the public that wishes to speak, please approach the microphone. For the applicant we have?
Joe Thomason, 3277 Warm Springs Road, Suite 400.
Thank you, sir. First, is there a signup sheet down there where it looks like they're asking for your name and address?
There certainly is.
Please, if you would record that, it makes it a lot easier on the clerk's office Thank you. Okay, proceed, please, I'm sorry.
With me is Ben Young, who is with Spinnaker Homes, the developer of the project. He's here to answer any questions that have to do with construction and maybe timing of when these improvements were installed. What we've got here on the table is actually the exhibit that was submitted with the application. There's two parts to the request for the waiver. There is a section, and I'll point to it if I'm not sure how clear this will come across. There's about a 50-foot section at the end of the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac of Armistead Street, which backs up to Deer Springs Road. And actually, what is occurring in this 50-foot area is due to the elevation of the cul-de-sac, which is higher than the adjacent curb out in Deer Springs. The street drains towards Deer Springs, and you can see that there is a flume on a sidewalk under drain, and this has all been constructed, by the way. It caused issues with grading, and what they ended up doing in the field to make it fit was pulled the sidewalk away from the property line and pushed it up against the back of curb. I do want to point out that we do meet the sidewalk with standards and the three-foot amenities zone landscaping area, they just happen to be flip-flopped right through this area. The three-foot is behind the sidewalk instead of in front of the sidewalk, so it's almost like a meandering sidewalk right in this area. The second area that is being requested for the variance is about a 40-foot area where there's an existing Nevada Power switch pad, and actually, that switch pad was constructed, I want to say, in early 2002. And actually, if we go back and look at the timing of the Town Center standards, those were adopted in late 2001, and then I think finalized early 2002, so that switch pad was designed and installed, I want to say, almost concurrent with the adoption of the standards. In fact, I believe the Nevada Power plans were approved by the city and the county to that location back at the end, I want to say it was January of 2002. There's substantial improvements, very costly to remove and relocate if we even can, and this area what we're asking for is a reduction of, from a five-foot sidewalk to a four-foot sidewalk, which is attached to the back of curb. We really can't landscape it. It is the curb, the sidewalk, the switch pad, and then the property line. We have worked with staff on a landscape plan to, and I'll flip this over, to landscape either side of it, to try to hide it from the street. But we ask for your approval of the waivers on these items. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name, address for the record, and sign the sheet at least.
I'm Ben Young with Royal Construction Spinnaker Homes. Our address is 4511 West Cheyenne Avenue, North Las Vegas. During the course of all of this procedure, we brought a Nevada Power line from Ann Road to service this Town Center area to service our project and also Concordia's project, which is adjacent to ours. At that particular point in time, none of this area had been developed. We were, us and Concordia, were the two initial developers that started in the Town Center standard, and as I'm sure you're all aware of, there was no power available in this area at all. The endeavor of bringing this line all the way from Ann Road underneath the Beltway all up through the neighborhoods, and on up Durango, and then turning on Deer Springs and coming up, this all was coordinated and reviewed between Nevada Power, City of Las Vegas, City of Las Vegas Public Works Department, and collectively, the plan approval and decision of how to accommodate this situation resulted in the placement of this switchgear and pad in this particular location based upon land developments, approval and review of all of this. Beyond that, in respect to this same circumstance, this all was approved with our Unit 1 portion of the Spinnaker Town Center 1, Unit 1 subdivision in this area. And all of that was reviewed and approved prior to January of 2002. And then final approvals, of course, occurred slightly after the 2000 year turned and we moved on into it. So our position, to a certain degree, is the fact that the land, the easement, and the property that the switchgear certainly sits on, was all approved and incorporated into that design at that particular point in time, in conjunction with the adoption and the implementation of the Town Center standards. So again, the switchgear location was pretty much given to us by the street realignment of Deer Springs and land development in relationship to reviewing everything, so...
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Looks like somebody's asleep at the switch here. But I'd like to ask staff, is there a school around there? Do kids use this sidewalk for school access? If not, you know, you can get away with it. But if, but if there's a, especially in elementary school around there, where people are pushing baby buggies and a bunch of stuff like that, you know, that it just won't work.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the Planning Commission for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I understand the issue of the free right turn lane, you know, the way the profile intersection, kind of, this is like a perfect storm of engineering flaws at this intersection. And I'm okay with most of this. The problem I got is where you wrap around the Nevada Power box, it looks, at least in the elevation we have here, there's already been graffiti, so without landscaping, it seems to be a more attractive location for graffiti there, and there seems to be a lot of uneven elevations that make it an unsafe public... I mean, I see people tripping on the curb. If anybody's using the sidewalk, there's a chance there. Is there anything that can be done for this, Public Works?
Lucian Pike, Public Works. As far as handling tripping hazards?
I mean, you've got some uneven curbing here at this, with this, it just looks like it's still under construction, at least from the pictures we're seeing here.
Yeah, as long as it meets the ADA requirements of a 2% cross slope, they should be okay. And I'm not sure if their private is, obviously not signed off yet, but we have our inspectors for Public Works that would inspect compliance with ADA and if they're meeting minimum requirements for access.
If this meets all the ADA, I want that inspector to come to my properties. I just think there's, I'm not sure what the developer can do here. I think this is a Nevada Power issue, it's, I mean, there's just a lot of things right here, and like I say, you know, the, where you've got the flood issue and the grade change, I can understand that. But this, this just seems like a big bust in engineering on a couple different parts, so I don't know if there's a solution for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I have some concerns about this. First of all, I see some landscaping that's not done. I just see rocks up against the wall area. Is that going to be landscaped, or is that just going to stay rocks?
It'll be landscaped. In fact, the landscape plan was prepared and provided and reviewed by staff, a portion of it which is shown. So the intent, and in fact, the staff recommendation, was to comply with the landscape plan dated 2/26/09, is in the write-up, and this is a portion of it, so the landscaping will be completed for these plans.
And then I have two other concerns. First, all around that area where we're looking at the photographs here, and I'm looking at the first one that was submitted to us, and I see that it is a nightmare there. I can see problems where kids, if they are walking on the sidewalk, they're going to have troubles, or at least potential problems, because if you look at, you can see underneath the pad that's there, I mean, there's got to be something they can do to fill in to keep that protected, particularly underneath the pad that has the Nevada Power box on it. Is there something you can do there as part of your landscaping to fill that in and make that clean?
Well, the pad itself and all the area around is solid concrete to where it's all protected.
Are you sure about that? Because some of the photos I'm seeing are showing that underneath the main slab, it's rocks under there.
Well, I'm not sure when the picture was taken, but last year, we went in and, and I may be mistaken if something has been pulled out or whatever, but that we did go in and concrete underneath the pad and do a vertical wall to protect all of that. And in our conversations with Public Works, in particular Paul Birken, we've offered to put a pipe rail there to protect anybody walking by where the curb and sidewalk meet so that there is safety there, they don't fall off of the curb, they don't slip off of the curb into traffic, as well as, as much as Nevada Power will allow us to do the same thing on the inside to where, in essence, you would have like a handicap-type rail on both sides of the sidewalk to direct traffic through the walk egress area.
I like that. I would like to see some kind of rails put on there, because I do, I mean, it puts pedestrians right next to the street because of the, because of the problem there, and it would be nice to have some rails that would keep the kids and other pedestrians...
We're not adverse to doing that, and we've requested direction to do that. However, it's been pretty much indicated that, you know, wait till we have the hearing and then determine what the commissioners, you know, may suggest that we do, you know, to accommodate the circumstance. The unfortunate part about the switchgear is that, you know, that placement and specific geographic location, you know, was given to us by the engineers, by the city, and all of that, and we put it where we were told to put it. Ideally, had we known back in 2001, 2002, you know, we could have moved that switchgear back further. But there were, at that point in time, specific requirements by Nevada Power that regulated and mandated specific access to a switchgear of that magnitude. That serves about 4,500 people. We've looked into the possibility of moving that switchgear, and other than being a $200,000-plus expense, Nevada Power pretty much has just flat told us that'll never occur because of the amount of service that that would interrupt and the customers that would be affected by relocating that unit.
Okay. Director Reeler, is that a possibility? Can we, can we put on there a condition that they will fill in the sidewalk, the concrete areas around the pad to make sure that's protected, as well as guardrails?
Chairman and Commissioner, yes, you can. And the, excuse me, the issue of Nevada Power requiring access, that's correct, directly from the street. Our requirements for these types of boxes to be, to have landscaping around them have been on the books for many years, and Nevada Power is certainly aware of that. To put landscaping on either side of these facilities, I certainly have never heard Nevada Power say that is not possible. They only need the access from the street, not from the side.
No, understood. I'm referring to the fact that the relocation of the box Nevada Power's indicated they would not allow us to do. In other words, if the box, the whole assembly was moved back five feet, or 10 feet, or 15 feet into the, to the, our lots, our wall area behind, and their reasoning is, is because of the amount of service that it's providing, the amount of customers that are serviced by that facility, it would be impossible for them to shut it down for it to be moved.
Okay, that may well be the issue of shutting it down, but to have designed it properly so that it was the right setback could have been done originally.
At the point in time that this was approved, this was the acceptable design at that point in time.
And not to the...
Chairman, excuse me?
Please, go ahead, I think you're getting ready to bring up the same thing I was going to do.
Chairman, I just wanted to ask Public Works to verify, did I understand you say that, that if you went out and measured and the slope was correct, it would meet ADA standards, or that it already does meet ADA standards at the slope and at this width? I misunderstood, I didn't understand what you said, sir.
Well, at this time, I cannot verify if it currently meets ADA, only that if our inspection division would sign off on it, then that means that they would meet ADA. And after looking at that picture...
So you're saying at this time, it has not been written off that it does meet ADA?
Correct, it's not signed off at this time.
So then at this time, I will not support it until that inspection is done. Thank you.
Margot, if we, I was talking to Ben a little bit, not knowing, the switchgear sits in Nevada Power easement, they will control what happens there. If we set a condition that requires us to make improvements that we can't make, we'll be back in front of you again. So the recommendation that I was going to make was that could we agree and be conditioned to meet with city staff, inspectors, and Nevada Power at the location and determine, and come up with a solution that's acceptable to all parties and implement that, that solution, because I don't know what it's going to be at this point in time, and I would hate to say, put in handrail and have them come back and say, we can't have you do it.
It sounds like you may need to hold this and then come back, and maybe come back with a representative of Nevada Power to say what they can and can't do.
Sure.
My concern is, is kids coming up and down the street and quite possibly putting some type of railing around there that's so that kids know that that's there, because if they're on a bicycle and they hit that concrete step there, they're going to land on top of that metal box. Can I ask you, that other pad that's over there, is that for future? It looks like another concrete...
I'm assuming so. Again, that was part of Nevada Power's design and requirement of the initial installation. So I'm assuming it is for a future location. I know that there is conduit and a pull box that is in that vicinity, you know, under that pad, so that if, in fact, they did want to add an additional switchgear or whatever else they capacitor or something else there, I'm assuming...
I won't be able to support it until I get all those questions answered. May I have your name again?
Ben Young.
Young, thank you, Mr. Young.
Okay, if I, if I could, I think I hear two issues. One is, does the project, as it is current status, meet the ADA requirements? If not, they'll have to be brought up to the standard. The second is concerns about the advents of landscaping, and I think we need to put that in as a condition also, and bring it back in. Would two weeks be adequate time to have the meetings and get reposted, or do you need 30 days?
I would say so, but that certainly is going to depend upon Nevada, Nevada Power's willingness to participate. But I would assume two weeks should be enough, assuming that they...
Okay. I think we're ready for a motion, then, if someone...
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I mean, I understand the applicant's desire to move this along, and I'm willing to make a motion to hold this for two weeks to our next meeting, and hopefully, we're prepared to make a, you know, ruling at that point in time, so the onus on you to reach out to Nevada Power if that's the way this motion goes.
Okay, motion's been made to hold. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that's in abeyance to March 26th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
We now move to item number 12, which is zoning 32740. The applicant owner is the First Presbyterian Church of Las Vegas, Nevada, from RE residential estates to O Office at 1515 West Charleston, 1608 and 1620 Ellis Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the general plan designation for the subject site is O Office. This rezoning would bring the general plan and zoning into compliance with each other. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Before I do, I would disclose that the, one of the applicants here is a Rotary Club member of mine, and that relationship has absolutely no impact whatsoever on how I'm going to vote on this matter. Declare the public hearing open and ask the individuals in attendance to approach the mic if they want to speak, and on behalf of the applicant we have?
Jim Veltman from Studio VBM. The last time we were here, we made our request, and the commission requested that we have a citizens' meeting, neighborhood meeting, which we did have, and with me is the pastor, Jim Houston Henkin, who was also there, and he'll give the details of that meeting.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, sir, I'm Jim Houston Henkin, Pastor First Presbyterian Church at 1515 West Charleston. This commission requested that we have a public meeting to talk about our zoning plans and the reasons behind that. We did hold a meeting roughly two weeks ago. We included in that meeting the Neighborhood Association, the Neon Ellis Neighborhood Association immediately adjoining the church, as well as several neighborhood associations adjoining, in adjoining territories. We also invited... We also invited our city councilwoman, Los Tarkanian, NDOT, and the Project Neon folks. And we believe we had a good meeting. We discussed the issues. I think we resolved most of the issues and are working on some other areas to be better neighbors. Christina Gibson's here from the Neighborhood Association to comment as well.
Thank you. And would you, if the item is approved, would you accept the conditions as presented?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing is open now, so if you'd like to approach the mic, give us your name for the record and.
Thank you. Christina Gibson, 1309 Richard Court, and I'll fill this out. President of Ellis Neon Neighborhood Association, right adjacent to the church. We did have a meeting on March 6th. It was very successful. We worked out a lot of issues. We've made a lot of progress. We're working together to develop a neighborhood watch committee with the church. Just so you know, one of our challenges was reaching out to a larger neighborhood than just the 1,000 feet. We had a little bit of challenge getting to some of these neighbors and inviting them. We have a, a unique little area between Rancho Oke, Rancho Oke, Charleston, and Martin Luther King, and we really want to include them in everything that's going on. So in the future, I just request if we can get help with extending that outreach, it would be helpful for us in our neighborhood issues. They've worked really hard in meeting, addressing our issues. We had NDOT there to, and committed to move, to work with us better and to communicate better with us with what's going on. I think that helped the church as well. They're making progress. They're moving towards getting all of the ambulances out of the parking lot, which wasn't currently zoned for the fleet vehicles, which was one of our concerns. And they have committed to working with the neighbors if there will be any future development on this site and getting our input. We are very pleased with it. We're very excited that we're working together and all being better neighbors. So we support this. The Ellis Neon Neighborhood Association does.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I just want to applaud Christina Gibson and the church for working together and for bringing in all the other entities like NDOT and the, the neighbors and, and your councilwoman, because a lot more came out of this than just these little offices. And I think when you do good government and you're a good neighbor and you work together this well, you're a very good example for the entire community, Christina. And I, I applaud your effort. I know how hard you work and I appreciate you. And I do, I will support this item. And I did want to say for the record that I did go on Monday at 1:30 and I sat in the parking lot that Ms. Gibson's talking about, about the ambulances. And what they do, for the record, is they go out, the employees go out, they start them out, they let them sit there, they run and run and run and run. And I sat there for maybe 10 or 15 minutes and nobody comes back and they just leave them running. And it definitely is something that our city needs to go look at and see. The unfortunate part is, we love American ambulance and there's really no place else for them to go. So my hope and my prayer is, is that something else comes out of it for this. So you'll see my support, and again, I applaud all of you for working so well together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I do have one, I guess, comment, because I do support this. I think the church has done a lot of good things there and working with the neighbors on this. I just want to clarify, because I saw this, you know, kept looking at the zone chain. This property has come before us on numerous occasions for a myriad of off-premise advertising experiences. And I want to make sure, I'm going to support, I just don't want, and I want at least the pastor and Mr. Veltman, just to put on the record, there's nothing behind this. We're going to see an application for, for these, all those billboards to return, are we?
No, we are drawing no plans. We are changing nothing. It's going to stay the way it is and they're not moving.
Pastor will be a little more straight and direct, I'm sure.
In the, in the spirit of full disclosure, let me say this. We have withdrawn the, the idea for billboards. We don't want billboards. And in all honesty, the billboards weren't the issue when we came before you. We're facing a possible eminent domain challenge. And we want to be as expensive as possible so that we can negotiate fairly. That's the reality.
You can be as expensive as possible because you're on one of the primary corners in the city of Las Vegas.
Right, and billboards would help that, but we have withdrawn that. We don't, we realize that's offensive to neighbors and that was not our intention. So we have no intention of billboards. But we do have an intention of trying to stay where we're at. And to do that, we have to be able to negotiate with the eminent domain issues.
Thank you.
Public hearing's closed. Can I make a statement or have a question?
Go quick.
Okay. I forgot to state that I would like to meet with a city planner in the future, make an appointment and discuss sort of this whole area. We are pressed up against a whole lot of NDOT issues. And I think a lot of us working together as neighbors really need to sit down and figure out what these zoning things mean. A lot of us don't understand it, what's going to happen, what's going to happen with NDOT coming in. A whole lot of us have a lot of issues that may be similar. So as far as future rezoning for the church and stuff, we're in a really strange little situation, we're really getting pressured by a whole lot of entities. And I think, speaking for all of us, we don't know what that means we're going to want to do in the future. We had NDOT come to that meeting and say, yeah, we might go right over you guys. We might take you guys out. And one of the neighbors said, well, could we rezone too? And I'm not saying we want to do that, but I'm saying that we have a lot of questions right now. And so I hope that, to meet with the, a, a planning person to help explain these land uses and what the city would like that little area to look like, because I think that's a benefit to the city as well.
Thank you. There's a charming young man here in the dark suit, Doug Rankin. Be glad to give you his number and call him anytime you want to after 7 or 8 o'clock is fine.
I'd like to back up what Christina said. You know, NDOT showed up with Project Neon, and the scary part was they only showed up, they only showed up with phase one. Now, there's phase two, three, four, and five. They didn't show up with, and that's the main reason why we really want the zoning to go through, because of what is going to happen in the future.
I understand your predicament. Okay, we're ready for a motion, I believe?
I'd like to make the motion, please, for approval of item number 12, the zoning of 32740 with all staff's recommendations.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
That goes forward to Council April 15th.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is special use permit 32748. The applicant is MV Spa. Owner is North Shore Plaza LLC for a proposed massage establishment with waivers to allow for the massage establishment to remain open until 11:00 PM, where 9:00 PM is the latest allowed, and a zero-foot distance separation to a residential use where 400 feet is required at 8370 West Cheyenne Avenue, Suite 101. Staff report, please.
My name is Hern.
You're next.
Mr. Chairman, we received a late moment phone call from the applicant indicating they were not able to attend tonight. Is that what you're going to address here?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, so maybe there might be a request for an advance.
We would like to request for the next session to carry this case.
You want, we'd like the item obeyed?
The next session, we would like to carry it to the next session for this case.
Oh, just an extension of time or something. Okay, let's obey it for.
March 26th. I, I think the issue is that the, the applicant couldn't actually attend due to an illness.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may briefly make a comment to the applicant. Can you get us some nice photographs of that facility?
Yeah, I, I have it there.
And I want to see some floor plans as well, if you would, please.
Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I guess we'll entertain the, the request to hold this item at the end, so until March 26th, 27th? 26th, okay.
Can we have the applicant put your name on the record, please, for the clerk?
Thank you.
Your, your name, sir?
My name is Hernando Lagdamin.
Thank you. And motion to hold this item till March 26th?
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Cat, post. Motion carries. We now move to item number 15 and companion items, 16, 17, and 18. Item number 15 is variance 32640. The applicant is Metropolitan Homes. The owner is Ense Raza and Shiran Gunay to allow 119 parking spaces where 146 are required adjacent to the west side of Decatur Boulevard, approximately 1,000 feet south of Lake Mead Boulevard. Item number 16 is a variance 33015 to allow a 10-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 132 feet and to allow a lot coverage of 82%, where 50% is the maximum permitted. Item 17 is special use permit 32639 for proposed senior citizen apartment complex with a waiver to allow apartments on the ground floor where none are permitted. And item number 18 is a site development review, 32638 for proposed three-story, 40-foot tall, 151-unit senior citizens apartment complex with 5,460 square feet of commercial space. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the associated variances for reduced parking, excess lot coverage as well as for residential adjacency standards note that the proposed development will result in the subject site being overbuilt. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of the variances as well as all associated applications. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now and ask anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter to approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record and state your case.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to abstain from this matter. I previously represented a client that is sued, the owner, so I feel as best as I abstain.
Thank you. For the applicant we have?
Good evening. I'm Bill Curran with the firm Ballard Spa Andrews &amp; Ingersoll, located at 100 City Parkway here in Las Vegas. I come, I've given to the clerk a copy of a petition. I have extra copies if people would like to have those now to review while we're discussing this matter. I'll only make reference to it at the end of my comments, so. This application, or something very close to it, was before this council, before this commission and the city council, four-plus years ago. It was the same applicant with essentially the same project. There have been a few changes that have been required because of demands from the city fire or planning departments. But it's essentially the same project approved by both Planning Commission and the city council. I think it was in 2004. If I can just address some of the surrounding uses to put this in context. It's C1 to the north. There's mini storage and cell tower. And then further north is a major commercial shopping center that's anchored by Food for Less on the southwest corner of Lake Mead and Decatur. To the south, there are our three apartments on Decatur. And then immediately on the Fairhaven side, there are two one-half acre lots, one of which is vacant, the other one has about an 800-square-foot unoccupied residence on it. Immediately, immediately to the south of those two half-acre lots is another major apartment project. On the east side of Decatur from this project, there are our three condominiums. And then to the, immediately to the west is an RE County Island, including a large one-and-three-quarter acre vacant lot with a number of half-acre occupied residents that run north and south along Fairhaven and on cul-de-sacs that run off to the west from Fairhaven. The project sits on a two-plus acre elongated rectangular parcel that runs east and west from Decatur to Fairhaven. Our project will be three stories, 44 feet tall, with 151 units, 71 of which are one-bedroom units, 70, I'm sorry, 75 are one-bedroom units and 76 are two-bedroom apartments, with occupancy limited to senior citizens defined by your code as being people 55 years and older. On the ground floor at the front on Decatur, there's a 5,460-square-foot commercial space which fronts on to Decatur, which will service the needs of our future residents. The general plan for the property is serviced commercial and the current zoning is under an ROI for C1. The project will consist of a elongated rectangular building with an interior courtyard that will allow natural light and fresh air down all three levels. When completed, there'll be an onsite manager's residence to address any ongoing maintenance issues and to respond to the needs of the residents. In order to accomplish this, we need a number of approvals, which I'll address in order. First, there's a request for reduced parking. We ask for 119 parking spaces where 146 are required. We have a number of justifications. First is that the property is located on Decatur, which has north-south bus service and bus stops, bus shelters, covered bus shelters on both sides of the street, essentially right in front of our property. 1,000 feet to the north roughly on Lake Mead, there's east-west bus service. And then again, a little more than 1,000 feet to the south on Vegas Drive, there is another bus line that provides east-west service. This is a close-in location, and it's anticipated that many of the residents will not have vehicles because they can rely on the bus service and because all the basic needs are located within easy walking distance. There's a Food for Less store, there's laundry cleaners, sit-down restaurants, fast food restaurants, taverns, a bank, two casinos, storage space in the park, all within one block of this property. Secondly, we're asking for a setback variance. Building's going to be set back 20 feet from Decatur with an additional 10 feet in the entry area and on the corners of the commercial front just to give a more upscale kind of a look and feel to the front of the building. Then the building itself will step back away from Decatur as you get to the second floor, just to avoid having it looming up over the street. On the north-south property lines, there's a 10-foot setback. And exists, an issue exists with regard to our request on the north property line that we be permitted to do only ground cover type landscaping. This is necessary because we've been asked to put a sewer line to traverse the property from east to west. I believe staff feels that putting it on the south side would be preferable, but that would greatly impair our ability to, in the future, possibly include in the, in the development of this the two vacant, or the two small half-acre lots that are just to the south of the property. I can tell you that four years ago, as we were going forward with the project, our architect, well, our owner had made a tentative arrangement to purchase those two lots. Our architect had drawn the plans. The layout of the building really becomes much superior. There's a lot more design flexibility when that's included. We've talked to the owner, the current owner of the property, but we can't make any arrangements right now because until we know that this building can be built, there's no reason to talk about adding to it. And secondly, the reason this building wasn't built in the last four-plus years is because after we had garnered our zoning approval, the owners of the property refused to go forward with the transaction. I was not the attorney who handled the ensuing litigation, but I've been in contact with that attorney. They are now prepared to go forward and close that transaction subject to our zoning being reinstated. Unfortunately, the owner of the property did not maintain the zoning. He could have filed extensions of time and we wouldn't have to be here tonight, but simply didn't do so. They also didn't do some things like maintain the property too well, and that's why there have been some citations. And that may be why there's a homeless encampment there now. But we don't control the property as of this point. Anyhow, if the sewer line was to be moved to the south side, we wouldn't be able to build over it and include those, those other two lots, which may very well become available to us. Lot coverage is another issue raised by the staff. They've measured it at 82%. The project architect measures it 76%. I can't measure it at all. I don't, the only thing I can say for the discrepancy is maybe the staff didn't give credit for the open courtyard in the center of the building and maybe that. credit for the open courtyard in the center of the building, and maybe that's the difference, but in any event, I guess what I'd say is this is an extremely elongated, unusually-shaped lot that presents some unique design challenges, and we've done our best to come up with a design that's respectful of the neighborhood and can still practically be built during this challenging financial climate. The, we have a step-back design that adds outdoor decks for the benefit of the residents in addition to the interior recreational amenities, and finally, all traffic will enter and exit on Decatur with only a crash gate for emergency service to the rear, so that the people to the west will not have any additional traffic. Next, for the special use permit for the senior citizen apartment complex with units on the ground floor, nineteen of our total one-hundred-and-fifty-one units are on the ground floor. I am told that at some level, this requirement is being reviewed currently by the city, that there's some recognition that ground-level apartments may be the best thing for senior citizens. My mother-in-law lives in a senior housing project that's on the ground floor, and we had to wait a long time on the waiting list to get her a position on the ground floor rather than above that. We will, of course, have elevators, but there's nothing quite like walking right to your door rather than having to walk back and forth to the elevator. The site development plan, as I said, we have an unusually-shaped parcel that's necessitated the design of an unusual structure that's built around the three-story interior courtyard that will provide the fresh air and sunlight into the interior. In closing, I guess I'd just note that this is an infill project that's been designed in response to a number of unique challenges arising from wide-ranging land uses in the surrounding neighborhood and the unique shape of the property itself. We have a unique solution to these unique challenges, a project that responds to a growing need for senior citizen housing in our community, a project situated in a close-in location that's, that's served by three bus lines, an easy-walking distance and proximity to virtually every needed urban service within a half a block. I will tell you that it's our intention to file for a grant from the Nevada Housing Division that can add financial support to senior housing projects, and hopefully that's going to make this project doable even in these very difficult times. Just to avoid anybody misunderstanding what that means, that does not mean that this is low-cost or public housing or anything like that, it simply means that the state does have grant funds that they're able to give for senior housing projects, and we intend to apply to receive some of that money so that this can be built. Finally, I have walked the neighborhood in response to having learned that there were some objections from neighbors, those that live on the Fairhaven area to the west of the project. I can tell you that some people I've talked to more than once, I have found that there is one neighbor who is alter, unalterably opposed no matter what, no matter how the thing could be redone. There are two neighbors who do not have any objection to a senior housing project, but object to this being three stories, they would support it at either one or two stories. They have so noted on the petition that I've submitted to you, and eighty-two people have signed that indicating that they have no objection to this. So, I guess I would say that I believe that the neighborhood is quite supportive. I think that this is a project that is both sensitive to the needs of the neighborhood and sensitive to the needs of the larger community. With that, I know there are neighbors here, and I'll respond to any questions now or respond to anything that they may say.
Let's, let's get the public hearing completed and you can come back and respond. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter, please oppose the microphone and let us know your feelings about the matter. It could speed things up if the other intended speakers would sign in now, it wasn't intended to create a full-minute delay between each speaker.
Okay, my name's Joseph Gomez, I live at one-eight-seven-five Fairhaven, I also own the property at one-eight-zero-zero Fairhaven. And if you can see, these are my two lots, I just purchased this property less than a year ago.
Where is the subject property in proximity to yours?
Right here.
And which two did you purchase?
These two, the one with the little house on it.
And the cell tower over there?
No, the cell tower's over here.
Okay, gotcha.
This is what I look at when I look towards Fairhaven, towards the west of my property, nice ranch-style house, our, our properties are residential rural, we're horse people, we kind of want the neighborhood to stay that way. We are all in favor of that property being developed, it is a blight on our community right now with the encampments, with the drugs, with the game activity that goes on in that, on that vacant lot right now, so we welcome that property to be developed. My only concern with is the, the three stories, how it'll look over onto my property. As you can see here, here's my little, my little house there, that's Whiplash and Luke, by the way, my two horses. This is two stories, it already towers over my house, I'm afraid that three stories would really tower over my house. However, I was not privy to that first, that slide that you had that had the orange, it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the three-story building won't even start, there's going to be a parking lot right here, is that right?
If I could...
Yeah, right here.
I think it's on the screen now.
So, this is Fairhaven here?
Let's just, you know, present your, your position, and we could ask, get Mr. Chairman to...
If, if there's going to be a parking lot adjacent to Fairhaven for several hundred feet, I have no problem with three stories, as long as it doesn't look over onto my property directly. As you can see, we're already in, we already have the apartment buildings looking over onto my property. This is what I look at when I look to the north. So, basically, the hundred-and-nineteen parking spaces really doesn't affect our street, my concern is, is that if they do need more parking, where are they going to park? There's absolutely no parking on Decatur. Number sixteen, the ten-foot setback, if it was a ten-foot setback from Fairhaven, I'm absolutely opposed to it. If it's the ten-foot setback from Decatur that is being altered, or ten foot as opposed to the thirty-something, I have no problem with that. We definitely want it to be developed, so the senior citizen apartment complex is absolutely fine, the commercial space on Decatur, absolutely fine. The two other concerns that I have is the crash gate. We have problems with the crash gate that's just to the, near Vegas Drive, that is constantly being broken, kids, there's, there's traffic going in and out of that, they just push through it and they bend it, so if they are going to have a crash gate, we would want for them to have a nice, strong crash gate that'll absolutely eliminate any ingress or egress, egress onto Fairhaven by cars or by pedestrians. The other issue is the wall that they might put up there on Fairhaven, we would like for it to be stucco, we'd like for it to be landscaped instead of just a blank canvas for the quote graffiti artists that seem to frequent our neighborhood every once in a while. And my neighbors and I are very vigilant on taking care of the graffiti, but it does become a hassle. And that is about it. We want to work with them, but we haven't really got a chance to talk with them, at least, I'm a new neighbor, five years I've been there. I haven't really, we didn't have a meeting, this gentleman was very nice, he came and he showed us the one rendering that he had, I wish he would have shown me this one, I would have been better prepared because I have absolutely no problem with that being a parking lot on that side here.
That's, I'll explain it.
And that's about it, and I have other neighbors here.
Thank you, sir. Next?
David Grant, eighteen-eighty-five Fairhaven Street. I guess my only concern is the lack of twenty-seven spaces, if the majority of the residents decide not to use public transportation, would that be a potential for overflow of parking in this development? And the other area that we are concerned about, which was addressed, was, we're pretty adamant about no access for cars off and on to Fairhaven Street, so if the crash gate is cosmetically acceptable, then we have no problem. And what Mr. Gomez says, no pedestrians, be allowed to enter or exit off of Fairhaven, so, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Next?
Yolagio Noriega, seventeen-fifty-one North Fairhaven Street. I lived at that address twenty-two years now. We fought diamondhead apartments coming in there. I fought a three-story building, apartment complex building, directly in front of my home. And finally, thank you to Randy Black at the time on the council, who agreed with us that three stories was just too tall directly in front of my home. I don't know how tall this back wall is going to be, but diamondhead apartment said six, eight foot, it's six foot. Constant traffic back and forth. I know there are drug deals going on in the evenings there. We've called the police several times, okay? A virtual forest, unquote, along Fairhaven behind those apartments, maybe a dozen trees, fifteen trees, and that's it. That's the virtual forest. I oppose, and this particular concept here, I oppose ingress and egress from Fairhaven Street, other than for the emergency service, okay? I'll go along with that. I can see the mountains to the north of me, great, okay? Two stories is pretty, pretty good, pretty tall. Three stories is just going to cover everything right there. I don't know where all these eighty-two people that did not oppose this, or, or all for it came from, there's only maybe fifteen of us that live on that street, two little cul-de-sacs. I'm sure the rest of those people live in the surrounding areas, of course, they're not going to be seeing this three-story building every day. I'm a senior myself, and I really think we do need senior living quarters for senior citizens, okay? But is that the place to put it? You've got senior complex across the street on Fairhaven, I mean, on Decatur, on the east side of Decatur already. That's, that's a lot of, as you can see from the drawing renderings, that's a lot of building, a lot of parking spaces for that small rectangular area. That's really, really crowding that little rectangular area. So, I, I just wanted to say that one story, me and my wife have no problem with that, neither do my other neighbors, we did not get a notification of this hearing in the mail like some of the other people did on Fairhaven Street, okay? Which, that's no big deal, I guess, but two stories is still quite high. Three stories, I really oppose three stories in that complex.
Thank you. How, you mentioned the height of the back wall being a concern to you, how, how tall do you want it to be, six or eight?
Eight foot would be much better, okay? I mean, behind that, along that apartment complex, the six-foot wall is, is nothing because of the slope on...
I just needed a number, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I think this is a good idea. I mean, the senior citizens need to have a place where they can go and shop, everything's there, the buses are, are right there. As for parking, we have that hand, those hand buildings near us, those parking lots are vacant, I mean, there's probably at least seventy-five percent vacant at all, at all times, so I don't think a parking is, is a problem. The gentleman that preceded me was complaining about the view, but views are not guaranteed by the laws, and the zoning, what they could put in here, I mean, could be atrocious, so I think this is a good idea. I hope it gets built.
Thank, thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and offer the applicant the opportunity to respond to some of those comments briefly.
Thank you, I'll, I'll try to be very brief. First, as to Mr. Gomez, he asked about the ten-foot setbacks, those are on the north and south property lines, not on the Decatur or Fairhaven property lines. So, they're up against the mini storages and the cell tower, and then against the apartments to the south.
I'm fine with that.
Secondly, the crash gate, question was raised about whether it would prohibit both vehicular and pedestrian traffic, that's our intention, we don't want anybody, particularly, we don't want anybody coming in from that side, but we don't have any objection to limiting people from getting out that side, there's no reason why people in there would need to go that direction, they want to go up on Decatur, that's where all the services are. As to the height of the wall, six feet is required, eight feet, it would be no problem for us, we'd probably even prefer eight feet, we want to limit access as much as possible.
Eight, eight feet stucco covered?
That would be no problem for us. As noted, and as I've talked about with many of the neighbors, there have been some problems with homeless in that area, and we don't want them getting into our project.
Very good, then. No further comments, I'm willing to close the public hearing and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion on these four items.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I guess this question is for Director Wheeler. On the eighty-two percent lot coverage, where fifty is allowed, so we're looking at like a thirty-two percent difference, is most of that lot coverage, is that covered by the building itself, or is that because of, does it have anything to do with all the parking spaces?
Chairman and Commissioner Boyes, the issue is that as you look at the site plan, the building itself extends over the parking, am I not correct, gentlemen?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you?
Okay.
So that the dotted line that you see here on the site plan shows the building, when you look at the elevations, it's much more clear, it isn't as though there's an error. The elevations show you clearly that the parking is below the building, so the building coverage is based upon, as you can see, the building extends above the parking, and that's the calculation.
Okay, very good, that explains that. I know this has been a, an issue, but I, I can support this project, I think there's a need for senior housing in the area. We've heard from neighbors that live in close proximity, and I think, Mr. Noriega, I think what the applicant did was the due diligence on his part to kind of expand, expand the notice area of where he got the signatures, and I think that's where he picked up those additional ones, by just making sure that he got signatures from people in close and those that are a little bit out, so I applaud him, applaud him for that. It's a unique design, but I think it's, it's doable in this area, and I think you're starting to see a change in this area. I know there's another pretty large senior development being proposed south of this at Vegas Drive and Decatur as well, so I think you're seeing a change, and I think it's a good type of neighbor in this area. I don't foresee all these parking spaces being used, I think seniors typically will ride with somebody, or, you know, my parents are, my dad's seventy-nine and my mom's, I'm not going to say. dad's 79 and my mom's, I'm not going to say, but they drive each and, they drive each and every day. And so I think those that want that sense of independence will. But I think having access to bus lines, three bus lines, one of them that is a major vein, and that's the Route 103, which runs Decatur. So with that, I know there's a lot of discussion. I was out there this morning, and I actually met your encampment neighbors. I didn't get too close, because there was one gentleman there with a pit bull, and... Was he? Yeah, I saw him in the pit bull, and I kept my distance. So hopefully, this will kind of mitigate that, and hopefully, if Mr. Curran's clients are sound financially, you'll see this built. So I don't have any more questions.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Just one question, because this does appear to be, I understand it's a three-story building, but these are residential units. If this was a subtly different architecture with a flat roof, would this, what height would this, I mean, we're measuring from the top of the hip of the roof, right, staff?
That's correct. It's a gabled item, so it's measured from the hip of the roof.
And that's what height? I can't read the, lost my eyesight.
Mr. Curran, is the height 44?
Yes, staff report says it's 44. I can, I can respond to Mr. Truesdale's question. We have discussed the possibility of making a flat roof and incorporating solar panels on there. That has not really been costed out yet. You know, solar panels are, everybody loves them, and they are exciting, and it's the wave of the future, but the project has to pencil out. And we don't have an answer to that question as yet. The question has been raised and discussed. Flat roofs do pose another problem, though, and that is they end up leaking frequently. So that's something that has to be factored in as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a question, Public Works?
Thank you.
Just wanted to make a clarification about the sewer that he and the applicant had talked about. If you, if we could look at SDR 32638, our condition, number 16, only requires them to meet with Public Works, we're not requiring them to build public sewer in that 10-foot buffer. We typically ask for a 20-foot easement anyways. So really, the condition just asks them to meet with us. For the potential, if we can get sewer to the, to Fairhaven, to service Fairhaven, then we're interested in doing that. But it's not a requirement that they build sewer for public purposes.
Thank you.
Just so you know.
Any other comments, then?
One more question. Your commercial piece, have you guys discussed the types of uses in that commercial piece, hours of operation and things like that, or?
We've discussed it. We wouldn't have any objection to limitation on hours of operation, really. You know, it's, the intention is that it's designed to service the needs of the people who live in this complex and the people immediately surrounding it. I can't tell you at this point that we have a tenant, but you know, a use, for example, a beauty shop would serve the needs of the seniors who were in there. And it would probably be something like that. It would not be a tavern or a casino or something like that.
Okay. So if I said hours of, say, 7:00 AM to about 8:00 PM?
I, I suppose I would say 9:00 PM tends to be a more standard time, but I don't know that that's a hill to die for, for us. I guess I would request that it be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Some people just need facilities before work and after work, and I think really the economics of it are going to drive it. They're not going to keep it open if it's not busy, but...
And if it happens to be a pharmacy, they're going to need early morning meds and late night meds, so it might be advantageous to expand the hours a little bit.
Okay. I'll put a condition there from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM then on the retail. Would that be on the SUP, Margot?
Yeah.
Thank you. And would you accept a, making the motion regarding the additional condition, that it'd be an eight-foot rear wall, that it'd be stucco covered?
I will, when we get to those items.
I think we're ready for a motion then.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on item 15, VAR 32640, move to follow staff's recommend, I mean, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions?
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And on item 16, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions?
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. In regards to item 17?
On item 17, I'll move for approval of item 17, but I want to add two conditions. I see there's four current. Number five would, Margot, you may want to help me craft this number?
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Commercial business hours shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and that occupancy shall be limited to persons 55 or older, to the extent allowed by law.
And do we put the request for the wall here as well? Oh, sorry.
We're on the SUP now.
Yes, ma'am. And that would be my motion for item 17, subject to all standard recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. Carries. In regards to item 17?
The, if I may, condition number five regarding the screen wall shall be amended to indicate that the western perimeter wall shall be eight feet in height, and the decorative block wall should be stucco or otherwise designed so as to discourage graffiti, subject to the approval of the planning and development staff. I offer that language because there may be other finishes and things that can be done to, in the design, to eliminate its attractiveness as a palette for graffiti.
Thank you.
Are you in agreeance with that applicant?
Yes, we are.
With that, I'll move for approval of item 18, with the conditions as amended by Director Wheeler.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And all items go forward to the city council on April 15th.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We now move to item number 19, and companion item number 20. Item 19 is zoning, 33088. The applicant is CMS Nevada LLC. The owner is CMS Mission Arts LLC et al., from CM Commercial Industrial to CM Commercial Industrial C-2 Commercial, General Commercial to C2 General Commercial, at the southwest corner of Casino Center Boulevard and Coolidge Avenue. Item number 20 is site development review, 33087, for proposed office and retail development, consisting of a two-story, 43,110 square foot building, a two-story, 51,630 square foot building, and an eight-story parking garage with 78,280 square feet of commercial space, with a waiver of the downtown Centennial streetscape standards for a portion of the frontage of Casino Center Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the rezoning, staff finds it in compliance to the, in conformance to the general plan, and recommends approval. In regards to the site plan review, the waiver that's been requested for the street center stems from an irregularly shaped lot there at Casino Center Boulevard, as part of the Casino Center alignment that's occurring, and staff is supporting that small waiver. In regards to the overall site plan, staff does note that there's a, in your, let's see what color sheets they're salmon today, there's a new table for height, the maximum height of the eight-story building with the parking garage is 122 feet. In regards to the site plan itself, staff finds it in conformance to the downtown Centennial plan and the goals and trends of the arts district, and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional support since publishing.
Thank you. And now I'd like to declare the public hearing open, and ask the, anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter to approach the microphone. And first up is the, for the applicant, we have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Tom Amick, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here on behalf of the applicant on this application. Also with me tonight are Mr. David Moses, he is the applicant, and our architect, George Bergman, in case you have any questions for them. Essentially, we have a couple of applications before you tonight. It's for a proposed commercial mixed-use project, and they'll have retail, office, restaurant in the arts district downtown. It's just under three acres, 2.87 acre site, located at the northwest corner of Boulder and Casino Center. The project essentially consists of three buildings, two two-story buildings, and a third building that is the parking structure, that's an eight-story building, that's 122 feet tall, will have ground floor retail uses on it at the pedestrian level, retail office and, excuse me, retail and restaurant uses at the ground floor level. Basically, we're, the project is trying to, it's born of the arts district in essence. We are, we are trying to capitalize on the pedestrian plaza that has now been, that will now belong Boulder. It's since been vacated. You're all very well aware of the Sculpture Park that is proposed west of our site. The existing alleyways here that are part of our project are part of the Boulder vacation as well, and they'll become part of our internal pedestrian plaza that connects out to the pedestrian plaza on Boulder, the vacated Boulder. There are two app, two applications. The first one is a zone change application. A portion of property is currently zoned CM, and the other, the other portion is C2. We're just combining the zoning so that it is all C2, so that's the zone change application. The second is the site development plan review. There's a couple of issues to point out on that. The parking structure, that's 122 feet, will have banquet and special events on the roof of that. The, this is the AO, the airport overlay for this is 200 feet, so we're well below that. There is no height issues here. With regard to our parking, we did a shared parking analysis on our project. It said that we needed 522 spaces, and we're providing 530. The landscaping, there is landscaping internally, with our pedestrian linkage internally, as well as the perimeter, all four perimeter streets, including the First Street beautification project that the city is proceeding with. It's a very exciting project for the arts district, one that I think the city and the applicant and the other property owners in the arts district envisioned when we adopted the design guidelines for 18B over here. We did meet with the arts district board back in August to present the project and to obtain their approval for some additional uses. We were seeking to be added to the allowable uses in the arts district design guidelines, which they unanimously approved. We also met with the, all the property, affected property owners in the arts district back in September, and presented the project, and requested confirmation that the additional uses we were seeking on the project were okay, and they were. That text amendment has since gone before the city council and been approved to allow those additional uses, which was essentially office. That wasn't a contemplated use at the time we did the arts district design guidelines and the banquet facility for the roof. So we haven't received any negative comments or objections from any of the arts district property owners. We think it's a great project that hopefully will kickstart things down here and dovetail the Sculpture Park and the Boulder Plaza. That's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. We appreciate the staff recommendation of approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Please approach the microphone and tell us your position on the matter.
Good evening. Dick Guyer, president, 18B Las Vegas Arts District Neighborhood Association. Of course, we're very familiar with this project. It means everything to us. One thing that this gentleman here did not say, which is very, very important, I note to the project and to David Moses, is the ACE bus stop is right there on the corner at Coolidge, and that will give this project the most immediate assistance as those buses go into operation, actually, this fall, way before this will be able to be built. But it will open up the possibility for a lot of development when access, easy access for both tourists and locals is provided with that wonderful bus service. So all in all, the other aspect of it, of course, as he mentioned, the park west of First Street, that small area there where the Agam Sculpture will go someday, that is being converted into a city park before the end of this year. And it will have paving stones and benches and trees and a fence around it, and it will be a plaza, a small plaza, that we'll be able to use for events also. So as a person who's been involved with the arts district since late 1997, Wes is responsible for recruiting me back then, I'm very excited at the prospect of this occurring, and I hope you'll approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Do we have any elevations on this? Ah, very, very nice. And...
Step ahead of you, Todd.
I'll interpret that as a positive reaction.
On this parking, will there, is this just for their people, or will there be some rental spaces for long-term for these high-rises that may be short of parking? That's the second one. The other thing is, now, this is Tom McGowan's old stomping ground, and I know how well that Tom Amick and Tom McGowan got along so well. Maybe they could have a statue of Tom McGowan down there, too.
I'm sure he'd like that.
There you go. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask the applicant to respond to those comments.
Just with regard to Todd's question, the parking garage is open to everyone.
Thank you. If there's no one else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. Vice Chairman?
It's an interesting project, and I've talked to Mr. Amick. I went to the public meeting, and I really support some of these creative things that the arts district is trying to push forward. My soapbox issue is, we need the Sculpture Park. We need, we need the, we need the baby steps of making the arts district come forward. And I, I understand that part of this project is taking care of those right-of-ways, the final dedication of Boulder Avenue, which I think is important. Mr. Guyer talked about the ACE bus line, which is, could be a phenomenal asset to the arts district, bringing tourists, business people, anybody who is going to learn to use the mass transit system here, to this area. I have a question, trying to understand the artist's perspective of the low-rise building, the low-intensity building, the overall requirement of so much parking. Because as I look at the arts district, it's always been presented as a transit-oriented development, the parks, the immediate area. We need, we need people living down there. We need, we need this culture of downtown, and I, I just, I'm trying to understand the parking garage, and, you know...
I'm going to, if it's okay, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm going to ask Mr. Moses to address the question.
Hi. David Moses, my business address is 107 East Charleston, second floor. I, the reason for the parking is because we're looking to create a First Friday-type atmosphere on a more regular basis. In the beginning, maybe weekly, and eventually, hopefully, almost every day. Not necessarily with street festivals every day, but we're trying to create that kind of environment where the arts district becomes a draw into itself. Initially, in our, in our designs, we had a lot more parking in there, but we wanted the parking structure itself to be as aesthetically compatible... itself to be as aesthetically compatible with our buildings as possible. So at one point, my instruction was to the architect, build as much parking as you can build without it looking aesthetically inappropriate. And that's how we got to the 122 feet and worked out that. Now, keep in mind that in addition to the retail that's going to be on the ground floor and the creative office that we're gonna do on the second floor, there's also the events that will be taking place in the Sculpture Park, the events that'll be taking place in the vacated area of Boulder. Those events will be put on by the Mission Project and also the Arts Factory across the street from us. We're hoping to have an environment that will include future street festivals, farmers' markets, live music on a very regular basis. So it's more than just the retail and dining experience that one will get from our two-story buildings. Keep in mind also that the penthouse level, not the rooftop level, but the penthouse level of the eight-story parking garage is event space. It's banquet hall, event space. And so we're hoping that we can have events that will attract meetings to the area that are different than the meetings that you can have in other convention-oriented space in town, but nonprofit-oriented events, green building-type events, because this is a LEED Gold Certified project, at least it's applied to be. That wasn't mentioned either. Events that cater to the arts, arts and crafts-type festivals, food-type festivals. That event space also has a pantry kitchen, so we can have coffee service catering for those events. So the potential layouts for that event space could range from, if it's laid out in 10-person banquet tables, 43 tables, that would be 430 people. If we have it in a seminar layout where there's long tables, people sitting, you know, kind of in rows, that would seat about 570 people. If we have it in a lecture format where there's chairs, kind of like an auditorium style, it could seat about 1,000 people. And if we had like a trade show format where we had 10 by 10 booths, it could accommodate 81 booths. Now, 81 booths would probably attract, you know, a few hundred people in that day for whatever event is happening. So we wanted to park it. We paid very careful attention to the shared parking analysis that we had done by a company out of Los Angeles called Farron Peers. Farron Peers, the principal of this company, actually helped write the ULI, Urban Land Institute Parking Standards, that are used all over. And they came up, knowing all of the uses that we have, they came up with 522 spaces, and fortunately, we were at between 530 and 540. And so we're saying 530 because we're assuming that there's gonna be some venting and shafting that we're gonna have to sacrifice maybe up to 10 spaces. So it's a range of 530 to 540 parking, but it's way above the 522 that's recommended.
So, and there's no living in this? This is not a live work in any way?
No. No. It would have been a great design, but the area is oversupplied at the moment, so it just, it didn't make sense to do any residential.
Okay. And you talk about street festivals, meetings, whatever, and I heard in one of the comments about the temporary city park being fenced. I always thought the Arts District was envisioned to be this open, free-thinking, free exchange of ideas. I think that's what Wes and Dick and everybody involved in the Arts, Margot's involvement in the Arts District and staffs, was always this open environment. And First Friday's always been a phenomenal, successful event downtown. But I was rather shocked, because I did go to the last First Friday, because I knew this item was coming up, and I hadn't been there for several months. And lo and behold, half the people are fenced off, paying a fee four blocks south of Charleston, or three, two blocks south of Charleston, and the galleries were doing their bit. It was like this open, free-thinking environment that everybody's presenting, suddenly it's got us, them, and those guys, and what's wrong with the Arts District today? That's what I, I mean, I'm gonna support your item, but I'd like to know what's wrong with the Arts District, because it was started off so good, and it's gone, it's gone nowhere.
Um, just...
And I don't want this project to be another one of those nowhere steps.
As a newcomer, two years ago, to this area, to work on this project, I asked a lot of those same questions. The fence around First Friday, the street festival, was mandated by Metro, wasn't their choice. So that's one item, and the people that run that is completely separate.
In all fairness, Metro's not a free-thinking organization. You know, and nothing is Metro, but that's counter to what an Arts District, you go to New York, go to Chicago, you go to Phoenix, LA, the street markets, the street fair are phenomenally interactive. And that's what we've done all our codes for, and it seems like now we're shifting gears.
I should also, I'm sorry, Mr. Truesdale, the Sculpture Park that is not a part of this project, but is adjacent to our project, that's west of First Street, is gonna be fenced in, and that's to protect the sculptures that are there. But it's not, it's fenced in in an aesthetically pleasing way. And again, that's city property and city business through that, the nonprofit that runs that. Boulder Avenue, between the Mission Project and the Arts Factory, is not going to be fenced in. It'll probably be bollarded, but there needs to, there's probably gonna be fire access needs and things like that. We intend to, you know, probably put some kind of plaque that says, "You're now entering private property," but it will be open. Our property itself, all of the pink area, will be locked down at night with, you know, attractive fencing or something, but open during business hours. But Boulder Street itself, that is the private property portion of Boulder that's been vacated, will be open.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak, please give us your name for the record?
Wes Isbut, 107 East Charleston. I would like to reiterate, the plan was always to keep the Boulder Plaza open for pedestrian follow-through. The fencing around the Sculpture Park was deemed to be a necessity because of the fragile nature of the sculpture, the sculpture and the control of that. But the plaza itself, we, Mr. Truesdale, we agree with you fully that it needs to be open and pass through. So everything that can be done to create that is. And we, too, feel it's very disfortunate that the cage is surrounding the southern portion of the First Friday, and hopefully in time that can change. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Yes. I met with Mr. Amick the other day in my office, and there were a couple of questions that I had, and perhaps you can clarify them for me if you didn't already on the record. My questions were regarding the tree scape or the street scapes. I believe the recommendations of the city were for, call out for specific types of trees. If Mr. Rankin, is that a, or Mr. Amick, is that, does it specify what type of tree? And the reason I ask the question is, much like the project that we had, this body approved, I believe in the last meeting, on the other side of Casino Center up near Colorado, the city has a street scape, a canopied tree on both sides that go up, and the new development that came forward was calling for palm trees. And my thought was, we want to keep a continuous boulevard effect, and I think finding species of trees that create a canopy on the street scape and on the sidewalk are critical if we're to seek some kind of pedestrian activity, which is key to the success of this whole area. So I note in the illustrations that you had provided, on one side it had palms interspersed with, looked like a tree with a canopy, and on the other side, I think, was the canopied tree. So was there any clarification to that? And my hope is that as other projects eventually come along that street, that it can be seamless and we can mimic that, so that there's a long-term goal of what we want the street to look like as new development comes in. Mr. Amick or Mr. Rankin, can either of you answer that for me?
Within the staff report, there's a chart that details the requirements for the palm trees and shade trees on each street. For an example, on Casino Center Boulevard, the requirement is a palm tree 30 feet on center. The applicant isn't providing all of those due to the small deviation there on Casino Center. Staff does note that the tree scape, the street scape along this section will be installed as part of the BRT route. At this point, I don't know what the design looks like, but I believe it would be in conformance to the Centennial Plan as it exists.
That is a requirement, yes, that along the BRT route, the Centennial Plan standards are being met for the street scape and the sidewalks.
Okay. And then my other question was with regard to construction staging. It's just something minor. I know there's a lot of holes in the ground out there. I'm assuming there are places to do your construction staging adjacent to this project. And my hope is that even though we need all the development we can get down there, the good development is that we don't tear the streets up to build something, only to tear them up again, and that we end up blocking them all off where there is no easy access. Has that been something that's considered?
To answer your question, we own a lot, we own a 50 by 140 lot that's across the street from us on Coolidge, 7,000 square feet. That's one area that we'll be able to stage on. And just ideas that have been, first of all, there's a lot of land all around us that we can probably coordinate with owners for.
Okay.
But, you know, another possibility might be a temporary closure of Coolidge with city approval, if the city was okay with that. That's something that we would address at that time.
And I appreciate that. I think there's plenty of area for the staging. It's just that, as I navigate downtown, as probably any of you know, you're constantly zigging and zagging, and streets closed and opened, and I suppose in some respects, that's a good thing. But any way that we can plan it to mitigate and to allow traffic to flow is a good thing. I wanted to thank you, Mr. Moses, for your commitment down there and for your investment. I really like this project. I like the parking garage. I like the design. I like the street scape. I like the thoughtfulness, and I especially like your investment in the community. So I applaud you.
Thank you. With that having been said, are we ready for a motion?
If we are, I'm more than pleased to make the motion for approval of the zoning, Agenda Item Number 19, ZON 33088.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries. And regards to Item Number 20?
And with regard to Item Number 20, the site development review of 33087, my motion would be to follow the recommendation of the staff for approval. Do we have a clarification or amendment?
An added condition in regards to the construction staging plan shall read, "A comprehensive constructed staging plan shall be submitted to the Planning and Development Department for review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permit. The construction staging plan shall include the following information: the design and location of construction trailers, design and location of construction fencing, all proposed temporary construction signage, location of material staging area, and the location and design of parking for all construction workers." Thank you.
Mr. Amick, is that something that you'd agree to?
Yes.
Then my motion would be for the amended condition is read into the record by the staff.
Before we vote, one question for Public Works, because it showed on the SDR, and I missed it, is, it shows a Nevada Power yard, I mean, or facility, and it looks like it cuts into the middle of the First Street promenade. There's no detail. Is that gonna be incorporated in this drawing? Is there, I mean, there...
As far as...
Because it didn't appear to show any fencing or any elevation.
We are, right now, we are working with Nevada Power on the redesign of their facilities. I think you're talking about this area here that jumps into First Street.
Actually, where it's in the middle, courtyard.
Oh, yeah. Yes. There is, 10 feet of that would be theirs, 10 feet would be ours. As part of the redesign, we're working with them. It's, the conversations have been, they don't want anything outside of their wall, so they would give that to us in exchange for us redesigning their facilities, burying their lines, et cetera. So...
The question is, the street features and wall feature that is gonna be on that exterior is gonna be part of your development?
Yes.
Look and feel, not a, not the ever-popular...
No, because that's a crucial point to us, to make sure that that Nevada Power yard is incorporated and aesthetically works with what we're doing, and that's what we're working with them right now.
Okay. Hopefully, that'll actually bring this together. And then just one other comment, and I do support the motion, I really do, and I hope this project is incredibly successful. In doing some research, I found on your webpage and some comments, there's no signage as part of this application. So any signage as it relates to this, the building garage comes back before us under a use right?
Any off print or signs, yes.
Yes.
Or would we require it to come back under a master sign plan anyway?
No.
Can we add that? Commissioner?
If you want a signage plan, you can ask for it, sure.
It's the Arts District. We want to see some things, and I don't think it's, we, it's like our, like our scene, by the way, we encourage people, but we don't expect it. And I just, I'd like to see it happen.
A comprehensive sign plan shall be submitted for review at a public hearing of the Planning Commission prior to issuance of permits for exterior signage.
Make the motion, accept that?
That's fine. Yeah, we anticipated bringing the signage back all along, so...
My motion would be amended accordingly.
Okay. Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. The motion carries.
Both matters go forward to the City Council on April 15th.
And we'd like him to start building immediately.
We understand. We'll do our best.
We'll now take a five-minute break. Be right back. We'll now take a five-minute break. Be right back.
Okay.
Yes, 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 and a lot of them changed. We're changing a whole bunch of stuff.
Okay, we get to know that?
Well, we got some of them, like some exciting.
Okay, well, we know now, so let's know.
Yeah.
My fault.
How's it going?
Hey, I need my install now.
Working on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Oh, you say, I heard that. Okay.
Okay, well, maybe I'm in the middle of this, but the bottom line is, here's the
And the issue is...
I don't know.
I don't know.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
And the issue is...
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 I don't know.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I didn't get that.
What is it?
What is it?
You know, I probably put that with...
I don't know.
Okay, let's go down to the...
Okay, this is, um, this is 10, 12, 13.
What's the answer on 24 and...
Oh, I'm good.
They're moving their violence.
What happens to 28?
Okay, and that's, so we're not changing anything.
I'll just say what they do.
No, these are done. They're probably half a year, I think.
Again, cut paste the construction base.
We would appreciate that.
Whatever you can say.
It doesn't matter, but at least we've been...
You know, it goes, it's quite a while.
I'm glad you're here.
And I swear, I have a...
Again, cut paste the construction base.
Oh, okay.
We would appreciate that.
It doesn't matter, but at least we've been...
You know, it goes, it's quite a while.
And I swear, I have a...
Yeah, we're looking at a plan.
And then you have to go back to 13, 14, 15.
I feel like, you know, once you...
It's good.
It's gonna be, it's gonna have to look old, like the boat.
It's gonna be after this.
It's gonna be...
It's gonna be...
It's gonna be...
I appreciate it.
And keep jumping to you.
That's why I was...
Yeah, we do. I taught them to...
He wasn't doing it.
So that's how they know they're in the last.
Oh, I don't know.
I need you.
Is there anything else on the side or side?
I ran, I ran.
I didn't want to turn on.
I know, I turned it on.
I have to tell them.
Is that like the...
Is there anything else on the side or side?
I ran, I ran.
So I'm not sure.
Ask your, listen.
I'm gonna be, yeah.
Sure find one.
They're not running.
I got you.
I want to be special, just big stuff.
I have to, yeah.
I don't have a pen.
Have you told them about...
No, I didn't.
To tell my back boy.
Of course he does.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think I'm...
This is my first one here.
I hope you come out with...
I hope so.
We're starting on 4th.
I have to make some decisions.
Okay, we'll be starting again in about one minute.
We have, yes, because they've got...
All of the, our favorite board, you know, got a pile for not changing your...
We wanted them to watch the scene, by the way.
They'll just keep saying we don't control.
I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Planning Commission, and before we go to item number 24, I'd like to give Commissioner Buckley the opportunity to correct a vote just for technical reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify that the motion on the, one motion, one vote, item number A8, should have shown that I abstained, since our law firm does work for Nevada Power.
Thank you. We'll correct the record accordingly. We now move to item number 24, and I will have to abstain on that item because I have an ongoing in-kind contribution from the applicant in a political campaign, so I'll be sitting out on this one, as well as number, that's it.
28.
28. Yeah, I'll be sitting out on 28 and 24. Thank you.
Item 24, RQR 32716, required review, public hearing, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner TLC Properties, Inc. Required review of an approved special use permit for a 60-foot by 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 650 East Bonanza.
Thank you. Since the completion of the associated staff report, the applicant has provided documentation as to the finalization of the building permit for the sign. Therefore, as the sign is in good standing condition and the surrounding area has not experienced significant development or land use changes, staff is recommending approval of this application. If approved, staff would like to delete condition number two. Please note additional, an additional letter of protest was received after the publishing.
Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Nafsker with Lamar Advertising, 1863 Helm Drive. We accept staff conditions and ask for your approval.
If this was advertised as a public hearing, anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. When staff says it's in good standing, does that mean that it's been, says engineering sign-offs and it's clean of graffiti and that? Is that what you mean by that?
That's what we mean.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? If not, commissioners, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of item 24, substantial staff recommendations and condition.
There's a motion for approval. No other comments? Please cast your vote. And that is approved with Chairman Trowbridge abstaining.
And the motion with the deletion of number two, and that goes forward to City Council on April 15th.
Thank you. Item 28, RQR 327, can we take it now, or do we need to?
Sure.
Let's do it. 32733, required review, public hearing, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner Simon, Inc. Required review of approved special use permit for a 45-foot tall 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 3209 West Saher Avenue.
Thank you. Since the completion of the associated staff report for this item, the applicant has also provided documentation as to the finalization of the building permit for the sign. The sign is also in good standing condition and the surrounding area has not seen significant development or land use changes. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. If approved, staff would like to delete condition number two. Please note additional letters of protest were received after the publishing. Thank you.
All right.
Scott Nafsker, Lamar Advertising, 1863 Helm Drive. Again, we accept staff's conditions and ask for your approval.
This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow. What was condition number two?
That was the requirement for the final, which has been achieved.
Okay, if there are no other questions, please, motion?
I'd like to make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval on item number 28.
There's a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved with Chairman Trowbridge abstaining.
Thank you.
Both items go forward to Council April 15th.
We now go to item? We now go to item number 25, which is RQR 32721. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner Richard T. Crawford. Required review and have approved special use permit for a 40-foot tall 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign billboard at 251 North Nellis Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, since the completion of the associated staff report, the applicant has provided documentation as to the finalization of the building permit for the sign. Therefore, as the sign is in good standing condition and the surrounding area has not experienced significant development, staff is also recommending approval. If approved, staff would like to delete condition number three. Please note additional letters of protest and support were received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and turn the matter over, declare the public hearing open, and anyone who wishes to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Rod Carter, 2880 Meade Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. We appreciate staff's recommendation. We concur with the, with the conditions, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else to, attendants wish to speak?
Todd Farlow, what was condition number three?
The same thing.
Same thing.
Now, like, anyone else to attendants wish to speak? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. Turn over to Planning Commissioners for discussion, possible motions.
Mr. Chairman, for Director Wheeler, the picture that we're showing shows a double face. Is that something that I...
As you may recall, the, there was a consideration to change the code, to disallow these. That change to the code did not occur, and there are some signs that have this as a condition of approval. This one does not. Therefore, this is in compliance with code.
Thank you. There are no other questions? I'd make a motion for approval following staff's recommendations.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote.
That's with the deletion of condition number three.
Yes.
Item carries.
Goes forward to Council April 15th.
We now move to item 23, which is RQR 32720, 26, RQR 32723. The applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner is David Maddox. Required review of an approved special use permit for a 40-foot tall 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign billboard at 3340 North Rancho Drive. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, this billboard lacks any history of acquiring a final inspection for the sign. Therefore, staff is recommending an aisle.
I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone to attendants wishing to speak, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Rod, excuse me. Rod Carter, 2880 Meade Avenue, on behalf... Rod Carter, twenty-eight eighty Mead Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. We have submitted into the Building Department our, uh, certified engineer from our, or, excuse me, our certified letter from our engineer. We anticipate on pulling permit and having this resolved within the next thirty days.
Okay. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
Just to add, the if-approved conditions show that, um, the requirement to get the final obtained within thirty days, so approval would still have that requirement.
With that, clarifying, I'll make a motion for approval, subject to all staffs, uh, as if approved conditions, uh, and the applicant's guarantee that we'll have that in thirty days.
I've had it, yeah. It's submitted, the application is submitted to the Building Department, so it's just going through the process as we speak.
Okay.
And, and you agree to all conditions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. We now move to item number two. Post, I'm sorry. Post, motion carries.
Council April fifteenth.
Thank you. Now, we move to item number twenty-seven, RQR thirty-two-seven-twenty-six. The applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc., owner City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency. Required review for an approved special use permit for a forty-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign billboard at five-hundred South Las Vegas Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant has obtained a final, uh, uh, engineering record, and, uh, staff is recommending delete if-approved condition number two. However, staff does not support this, uh, continuation of this billboard, as it is located within the Las Vegas Boulevard Scenic Byway Corridor Management Plan, and the plan encourages the removal of existing billboards within this area, and staff is recommending denial.
Thank you. Like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record for the applicant.
Rod Carter, twenty-eight eighty Mead Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. We've complied with the conditions, um, we realize it's a city-owned piece of property. We've spoke with the, uh, representatives from the, uh, agency for, that governs this particular property. They're in support of it. Um, would like to continue, stay there until, uh, they feel the time is necessary to take down. Um, we concur with, uh, the conditions being imposed and happy to move forward. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Do these come with a, with a one-year or two-year lease? How did, how does that lease work on that? I mean, when the city decides that this, it's city-owned property. When they decide that it ought to go, I mean, can they say it goes now, or they have to wait five years down the, down the line?
The applicant, do you have the answer to this question?
Yeah, um, within a, what, excuse me, within our leases, it provides termination rights for property owners to do so. So, uh, when the time comes, the, uh, city will have their right within their lease to terminate when they seize fit. Would like to remain there until that time is deemed.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to planning commissioners for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman, um, you know, this is tough, cause, uh, the city has been very committed to its, uh, scenic byways program, um, and it is a major element of that scenic byways and a, a, a stated mission of the City Council and, and, um, staff that the scenic byways is the paramount, paramount, um, document along this area. So, I, I don't see how we sit here and vote to keep this. I think, I'm gonna make a motion for, uh, to follow staff's recommendation for denial, cause I think that's consistent with the downtown.
No further discussion. A motion's been made. Please cast your votes. A yes vote is to support the motion for denial of the request. Post. Motion carries.
And that is final action in absence of an appeal within ten days.
Seventy percent neon required.
That's quite all right. Hey, however it goes.
Can now move to item number twenty-nine, which is RQR thirty-three-two-seventy. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc. The owner is Salmon, uh, Salisa, Las Vegas Development LLC. Required review for an approved special use permit for a fifty-foot, fifty-and-a-half-foot-tall, twenty-foot-by-sixty-foot off-premise sign billboard adjacent to the east side of Interstate Highway fifteen, approximately eleven-hundred feet south of Bonneville Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject billboard has failed to receive a final inspection by the Department of Building and Safety. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of this request. Please note an additional letter of protest was received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter, please come to the microphone and give your name for the record and state your case.
Rod Carter, twenty-eight eighty Mead Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. Um, same scenario as, uh, the first one that lacked its final, uh, building inspection. It's submitted, it's going through the process. Um, we intend to have this resolved as soon as the Building Department notifies us that, uh, the permits are ready to be picked up, and we'll call in for our final. There's a history that goes into it. If you want me to tell you about it, that's fine. If not, I'll appreciate your approval moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, I'll move for approval of item twenty-nine, RQR three-three-two-seven-zero. Subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Your motion is to approve, to support staff recommendation?
My move is to approve.
And within the conditions of approval is the requirement that the final will be obtained within thirty days.
Correct.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Chairman, I need to, I vote to reflect, yes.
We have a, a correction. Uh, Commissioner Evans voted yes on that particular item.
That goes forward to Council April fourteen, fifteenth?
This thingy didn't work.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe the city clerk would like you to re-vote on that item with the new, with the new system. It works much better for everybody.
Okay, we can do that, too. Back to item number twenty-nine, we have a motion, uh, to approve. Please cast your votes.
I think we gotta wait on this. Okay, there it is.
Motion carries unanimously. We now move to item number thirty, which is RQR thirty-two-two-seventy-one. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Sarah Westwood Hotel LLC. Required review and have approved special use permit for a fifty-five-foot-tall, twenty-six-foot-by-twenty-foot off-premise sign billboard at twenty-six-oh-one Westwood Drive. Staff report, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's been no significant development or land use changes in the surrounding area, and staff recommends approval of this item. Please note that one additional support letter has been received since publishing.
Thank you. Now, declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record for the applicant we have.
Good evening. Rod Carter, twenty-eight eighty Mead Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. We concur with the, uh, with the conditions, and we humbly ask for your approval.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion for approval with all staff's recommendations for number thirty, thirty-three-two-seven-one.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post.
Commissioner Evans?
There it goes.
It goes forward to Council April fifteenth.
We now move to item number thirty-two, which is RQR thirty-two-two-seventy-two, thirty-one, which is thirty-three-two-seventy-two. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor. The owner is Jeannie Levy, Levy Out, Family Trust, and Alan Levy Trust. It's request for a required review and approved special use permit for a forty-five-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign billboard at twenty-nine twenty-one West Sahara. Staff report, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's been no change in, uh, land use or significant development in the area. Staff recommends approval. Please note, uh, we did receive, uh, additional protests after publishing.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open and, uh, invite anyone wishing to speak on this matter to approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please, for the applicant we have.
Rod Carter, twenty-eight eighty Mead Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. We concur with all the conditions, and we request your approval moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?